So please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands alone nation, oh my god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone in the room and do we have anybody here who wrote?
No.
No, okay. We're shaking you folks. Uh, this is the March twenty sixth. Meeting at the town of Canada they were planning board, thank you for coming out. Since there's some unfamiliar faces, let me introduce the folks up front here. Karina Hatch is our recording secretary, Kristen Smith is doing double duty tonight, she's our zoning officer, she's also filling in. At the keyboard. And then we go around the room, Tim Schneider, our older name is Excuse Tonight, he's got a. Stoker's got a force concerts, so I wanted to get into that, I said. He's going to planning board meeting.
Hurry up Chuck, I'm gonna set him.
Okay. Is that an excuse? Our, uh, our board comedian is, uh. Oh yes, Scott Neal, playing board member, Manza Van Laken, playing board member, Bob Ofcourse, planning board member, I'm Chuck Oilor. Chairman, that's Ray Van, representing the MRB group or engineering group, and here's another, our attorney. Tries to keep it straight. All right, uh, we're gonna follow the agenda, if you didn't get one, there's one out front. It seems to be a very short agendas. I sometimes regret when I say that. Try to get Mark out of here by soon. When we come to your portion of the agenda, uh, would you please come to the podium? Give us your name and address, address the board regarding your application. Uh, you will then get questions and comments back to the playing board, I'll then go out to the general public. See if they have any comments or concerns. That they'd like to bring to the board's attention. And then we'll reconvene the board and hopefully make a decision this evening, all things being. Uh, equal, uh, if you have to leave the room, we have emergency exits to the right and left. Please note where they are, and the first. Business item on the agenda is privilege of the floor. Is there anyone who? Would like to take privilege of the floor, which essentially, anything that's not in our agenda. Tonight, now's the time to speak to the board. And I guess you, some fellows are here with agenda items and there's nobody here remote, so we'll move on. Uh, we have one public hearing tonight. And the legal notice for the public hearing was published in the Daily Messenger. On March twentieth. So he met our legal obligations on the public hearings. And all that being. Reviewed, we'll move on to our public hearing, I will open a public hearing. For Trevor Grover, Mighty T Boba LLC. State Route three sixty four, Suite one fifty five, Kandigwa. And Trevor is proposing, uh, requesting special use permit for a commercial speech sign. In the, uh.
What shopping center is that?
It would be the Roseland.
Roseland shop.
Yeah.
In the corner there, where, uh.
Yes, sir.
Where pennies used to be, all right, welcome.
Thank you, I am Trevor Grover, I live, uh, two oh five Lake Shore Drive in Kandigwa, um, we want, we moved our business uptown. Uh, thought it was gonna be fruitful and beneficial and had a clause in their contract that stated that if someone sold the building, we had our first outs. That we could, we could actually move our, you know, or close it down the business. So we decided to move it back to the plaza where it was. Fruitful, a little more beneficial, um, so, um, what we wanted to do is the sign that we had on the building. The facade on the left-hand side of TJ Maxx, we're gonna put the same sign on the facade on the right-hand side where the old JC Penney. That has been angled in, so that's, it's the exact same sign. The professional installer is gonna be out of Geneva, it's, um. Oh my goodness, I forgot the guy's name now. Unfortunately, um, but they're, they're gonna be installing it, so as soon as we get the green light, they have the ability to get it installed, we have a template, so it's gonna have. Um, the right punch throughs for the electrical, um, raceway, but, uh, that's. We're actually gonna still install a little bit lower according to what, um, Travis, the guy from, uh. The town where he recommended, so we wanted it lower, so it's not high. Because the old wireless shop that's gonna be next to us, in case somebody moved in there, they have a place to put theirs on the facade as well, so. So that is the, it's the exact same thing we have before, same layout, hundred and ten inches long, we saw the same requirements.
Okay. So, uh, from a code aspect, the zoning aspect, the sign needs the, uh. Standards as far as the size, given the frontage. Speaking of frontage. Is the frontage thirty-five feet or ninety-two feet? I saw two different numbers in two different places.
So the frontage of that is, it, of the new angle that's there?
I, I assume on the.
Of the road itself?
Of the, rest of the lease area that you're ready.
So our frontage, the smaller that we have.
Right.
It, it, of the space, it is sixteen feet across. So we fit, we're underneath that, that angle.
Okay.
Yeah. So when, if you recall, the JC Penney entrance was right there in the corner, then there was two vacant spots to the left. Were in the, the first leg, it's big and spacious, we had, or had these. In our, our space is sixteen feet, so the frontage that they have is that frontage right there.
Okay, so I, I guess the ninety-two feet came from the resolution.
Yeah.
And I don't know where, got this thirty-five feet distance to do. Somewhere in the paperwork. So are we talking the right length of dimension, I mean, you said sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet is the width of the space that we're in, it's not the, so this facade is.
Full length.
Yeah.
So I guess switch that, Chuck.
I think that's a, it's gotta be a bit of a.
What's some beats now?
Sixty feet is the width of our, our space that's not actually in line with that facade.
Okay.
That's the facade they gave me to put the sign on. And that is, so if you look at where the, the pillars are, hundred and ten inches almost falls right in between the two pillars, the first two that you see there, and then the width of that whole thing is.
So they said you have sixteen feet to put your sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, but we were, I was, I think what you're referring to here is the width of the building from. Which I guess is tough to determine, because.
Yeah.
They, they don't rent to the properties. You, you, you rent the space underneath, you don't rent the.
Right, I'm not renting the facade.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, yeah, what's it, sixteen feet of. Uh, signage?
That's what I have a storefront, it's just. Yeah, the side front is a little over two hundred and some inches, so this is a bit right in the middle of it.
Okay. All right. Uh, you did request a waiver from the professionally prepared site plan. I, I think in most cases we've been grading that with, uh, speech signs.
If I could, on the building, I don't have a problem with that, if it's a ground mounted sign, I think you should at least have. Some sort of site, site plan to locate it. Your resolution says, there's Lance, it's added, and it's on the book.
That was created, that was, that plan was created by professionals.
Okay. And. Yeah, I don't see a reason to go through the special user. Considerations, uh. Because it's. All within shopping center, I don't think are affecting any other neighbors. Uh, we did get reviews back from. Uh, the Earth Department Transportation. Uh, they said they had no comments since it's, uh, right away, obviously, and. The county plane board had, uh, really had no response. So I think that, uh, pretty much covers it, once the board members took. Anything else?
No.
Uh, anyone, uh? Here, that, nobody's there, so I guess no one's here to, uh.
Want to hear.
Comment from the general public, so, uh. All that being. Said that I will close the hearing. And we'll move on to the seeker resolution, and then we'll also have to do.
So what I provided the board was just the type two resolution for seeker.
Mm-hmm.
And the special use permit resolution with, whereas that identifies that waiver was provided. From the professionally prepared site plan. And then I modified that, whereas the state and accepted by the planning board as the sign is attached to the existing. Building at your March twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So there is no sign, or excuse me, site plan resolution as we've done in the past.
It just gives the qualifiers to buy what are. Guys.
So just give those two.
Okay, I'll take a, uh, local resolution for both, uh, type two, uh, to roll this special. I'll make that motion to approve this type two seeker. Resolution and especially use permit. Approval resolution for CPN twenty-four dash zero zero eight. Uh, for commercial speech sign. That three, two, two, five, state route sixty-four, three sixty-four. With the.
I have a five standard, yeah, conditions that I've been attaching to.
With the files.
I'll second. Okay, got a motion to second. Any further discussion, if not on favor?
Aye.
Close.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome back to the town.
I appreciate that, you're welcome, please step in, enjoy, some of the best votes here, uh. So I'm good to go, if I have the.
Uh, check with the office.
Yeah.
So I'll get something from you then. Have a great night everybody.
Thank you.
All right, next we have, uh, CPN twenty-four oh thirteen. Uh, Pavel Komovich. Comes property at thirty-two thirty. Moran Road. Supposing a site plan approval to tear down. An existing office building, a shed, concrete pad. And then construct a newer part of the building. Logan.
Howdy.
Good evening, good evening. What's? What's in the works?
So, like you said, we're gonna tear down. The two existing buildings and basically. Mirror the building that's to the south and. Build the identical. Uh, multifamily residence in. Uh, that designated, um, footprint that's on the site plan, fourteen hundred forty square feet. Um. Beats all the general requirements. Uh, it's under, uh, ten thousand square feet of, uh, disturbance. We're tapping into all existing utilities, so the site work is pretty straightforward. No. Real new connections in that regard. Beats all the fire code requirements, and. That's about it, all right, we have a. I think we submitted a general, uh. Section of what it's gonna look like, but I mean, you could go, I'm not sure if you guys went to the site and saw the building, the smaller of the. Buildings there, but it's gonna look exactly like the ones that's there.
Eight units right now.
Yeah, eight units. Is this a new owner?
I'm not sure, I mean, what's? With the plywood and the door and window, it's just, yeah, constructing, I mean.
I think he's doing renovations, I'm here with Eugene, who's, uh. Doing a lot of the work.
Uh, yes, um, on behalf of the owner, uh, Arsenal Construction, we're hired by Pavel. To, uh, one, we're currently just renovating, uh, some vacant apartments and just making them. I guess updated and newer, uh, and he wanted to. Take advantage of that piece of land that it was an old administration building. And the old owner used it for tenant and maintenance, there was somebody there at all times. And has been vacant ever since the purchase, and there's an old shed. That has not been a UC there, so he wanted us to take a look at utilizing space and just creating a brand new. Uh, eight more units in this area.
You've also, um. Provided a small landscape plan that. Kind of give some screening in the rear and then. Supplies, uh, shade tree in that corner there, to provide a little bit more screening, because there's a gap in the hedgerow there.
Logan, I saw some notes about the. The garbage, um, dumpster there, does that move back off your plan now? And I don't know if that's, that picture.
Well, there's, uh. We're creating a new pad, so it's. Right now it's on the back edge of, uh, pavement, so we're giving it its own space. That way we can have more parking. Available, of full use of the parking.
Use of it, the other question I had on parking is handicap accessible, do you have all that thought about?
I'm not sure we have it designated, I'm guessing that'll be based on the tenant use, if that's, needs to be provided per. The tenants' needs, um.
Space on number, basis, number, yeah, yeah, it's a percentage of.
Based on the use, which is a eight unit, multi, two year story, multifamily residence.
The brand new building.
Which means you gotta have X number of.
It's a percentage of the space.
Okay, I mean, we can provide it, I, I, I don't see that being a problem.
Yeah, provided it shows.
Yes.
Do you, I thought it was an argument, do you have? Exist, is there any existing spaces? That are handicap spaces, because.
I don't, I don't recall seeing any designated handicap spaces while I was there, but that's. That's something that we can provide.
As a part of this project, since it's. Going from three building units to four building units. Just a question for the board and probably Lance and Mr. Nandler. Can we designate, um, as a part of the condition, the handicap parking to reflect all four? Of the buildings, or is it just the building in question that's being added?
Well, I think they just are required to have.
Right.
I think that's a, uh, ongoing state code issue. For each building. That being said, what did our? Code of, so he has a number of.
A parking demand analysis shouldn't be provided prior to approval, so if our conditions need to be acceptable.
Yep. Bingo.
Okay, well, that seemed to answer.
Yep.
Yeah, I think.
And I think that the parking demand analysis also will satisfy the Ontario County Planning Board's question.
Um, just the general use, is this intended for short-term use, long-term use?
Uh, the long-term use, yeah.
And, and the first set of site plan that was submitted to this project shows it as a motel?
Yeah, that was a mislabeling by the survey. Map. That is not a motel. That has since been revised.
Yep.
I just noticed it in the first, yeah.
Do you know, going from the ground up, uh, is the owner's intent to? Redo, uh, repair the whole parking lot, is that part of your?
Yes, so eventually, um, after, hopefully it gets approved, uh. There's gonna be a brand new, uh, parking lot, so repaving the entire parking lot is part of the deal and adding. I guess beautifying the land around it would be part of it as well.
Okay, so that, you're gonna start the ground, go from ground up, the pavement markings will now have to be placed on that new. Uh, what's called surface. The handicap will have to be designated.
Part of the line stretch package, correct.
Right. So, and that's for the entire parking lot, for the forty-four spaces?
Yes.
What size of the spaces currently, do you know, are they, the, the, ten by twenties or?
I mean, based on the measurements, I think they're ten by twenty, based on. Amount of space we have, I broke it down.
Okay.
Ten by twenty.
Reason I ask. I guess we can get into discussion, is forty-four spaces enough? Uh, I think you're staying with the same amount of spaces. That you had before. Uh, so you're going from one, one point eight-three spaces per unit, down to one point. Three, is it? Per unit? So do we, does the board feel, and this is our prerogative to. Determine what we feel is adequate, that it's not too many spaces, that it's just adding impervious. In the same regard, certainly provides enough parking. For the tenants to use it, so. In my opinion, I've never seen that pull. Yeah, I was at, I'm by there, the day I was, the day I was out there, there weren't any, in fact, you have a dumpster.
Yeah, you now, yeah.
Blocking about three or four spaces.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't know what kind of bit activity at night, you know, when people, they all come back to roost, I mean, uh.
When you said there's some vacancies right now, too.
Yes. Yeah, you have part of the renovation, um, and also just to give you a little background, mo- majority of them are. On a smaller side, so single apartment, more like a studio, so. Majority of the tenants that are there, there's no multiple cars, if that makes any.
I think that comes out the parking demand analysis, one of the things that I don't see in the application, but. I would think would be appropriate is the unit types, you have this many one bedrooms, this many studios, this eight unit, if it's eight, three bedroom units, which. It obviously isn't, just given its size compared to the other.
Right, I think the big, the bigger buildings have our bigger layouts, the smaller buildings are one bedroom. I have a sketch here, you know.
Any, um, thought on putting any EV charging there?
I haven't heard anything about that.
Uh. I don't know anything about that. Uh, if it's in. If it's something that's. I guess would be appropriate. This is on the. Middle to, I guess. How do I say this, cheaper side of rent? So the type of, um. Tenants that the owner typically has. Anywhere I'm going with this, I don't know.
Their junior, it, it looks like they're junior one bedrooms, sort of, and they're each junior one bed.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, like, there's a kitchen and dining area, and then a living and bedroom area.
Yeah, I thought that's, they were mostly college students out there, but I, I could see there's families too.
Looks like there's four, three hundred and eight square foot apartments. Eight, excuse me, four on each floor.
Yeah. Yeah, I know the, uh, apartment complex over there, uh. Uh, the high-rise, uh, they came in, they. We had a concern about the parking, number of parking spaces there, and I'm trying to remember what that ratio, that was down around.
Three, I thought it was one.
Which one? It's around four, okay. Well, uh. I think, we, four spaces are enough?
Has, has the, has the office been being used up until recently?
It has not been used since the prior owner.
Like, a decade ago?
Um, I believe it was a few years ago since the purchase.
Okay, let's spend this, I mean. Your code enforcement officer suggested apartment demand analysis was. It's not a reasonable request. I mean, and this, the owner should be able to do it pretty easily, because it's his parking lot. You know, so many cars there are, and how many peoples.
Well, I, I think, uh, let me take a look. Given the type of use. The other thing you could do is, you know, if it is a ten by twenty space. Take it down to a nine by eighteen.
Yeah, we might be able to grab a couple more.
Two, maybe two, and.
Yeah.
Under two on each side.
I mean, if, and if we are repaving it. There's potential to expand closer to the road, get a couple of spaces there.
I was looking at too.
So, I mean, I can talk, yeah. If Eugene, if that's an option, if we can add a couple more spaces closer to the road. And reduce the size of, uh. Um, spaces, we might be able to get up to the. Standard that you're looking for.
Can you?
Whatever that may be.
Can you add a couple spaces? Off the bed?
Uh, yeah, it drops off.
Oh, it's got three areas, okay.
And I wanna keep like the impervious surface to a minimum, just.
Yeah.
There's really not much room for.
That's the dilemma, we don't wanna create any more impervious than we have to, but in the same regard. We don't want people parking in the driveway.
Uh, I, I agree with you.
We're in the shopping mall, shopping mall centers right there. Yeah. What does the board feel, we need a parking analysis? We do, then we're gonna have to.
My bill would be no, if they decrease it. The size and increase the length of it. From my experience of going by there, I've never seen it pulled. That's my, my opinion.
I agree.
So if they did that, just in theory, they could, it, it might be four to six. Additional parking spaces, is that? Does that mean, I think that, I just wanna make sure that number, is that something that can identify?
Right.
No.
As a.
Does that work, or is it, does it need to be more than that?
You could do a condition that there's a parking demand analysis acceptable with an engineer.
Well, it could be provided to the code person, that's the condition.
I.
Well, his, yeah, I guess that's true.
I'm comfortable with that. And making sure that it's done and assessed, and then having the powers that be. Handle it as a condition.
Okay, so we wanna make sure the plan, or some sort of. Follow through that there's a commitment to, uh. Uh, repave, rebuild the parking lot. Uh, we're gonna sh- stripe it. Nine by eighteen spaces. Paper markings will be installed, uh, there'll be. The appropriate number of handicap spots. Provided at locations. Efficient to, I guess, the age building. So. That takes care of the parking.
So are you proposing that? The traffic, uh, parking study not be done?
That's exactly what I was thinking, because if the study is done. It may need negate and all that extra parking, whatever you're saying.
Either direction, that, my concern is that, one, we, we've got a concern with it, Ontario County had a concern with it, and, uh. And our CPO had a concern with it.
So, so.
I.
Do you want that parking study before we make a decision, or do you wanna put it on?
I'm happy with the needed condition to depart, that the results of the parking study. We have here.
Make it a condition.
So what I thought is, um, uh, parking demand analysis. Acceptable to the code enforcement officer. Uh. He submitted prior signature, so if he says it's never gonna fly, then they can't get signatures until they. Come up with, until they convince the code board, it's an option, it's not.
And Lance, you should figure out there, what, five or six extra, if we go down to nine by eighteen, so that put us at.
I think, I think you probably gain one on each side, if you add a space, you probably get another one, and it's possible, you might get another one. I just, I just wanna put a number.
Forty-eight to fifty spaces. I think what you're probably gonna get is the addition of your eighteen point spots.
Well, yeah, that's the other thing, you're gonna lose, you're also gonna lose parking spaces by, 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 the three that they're gonna probably.
So, I mean, presumably. The two bigger buildings have two bedrooms, and some of them need two, two spots per unit, that's. Uh, thirty-two spots, no. Steps thirty-two spots. And then, plus sixteen, one for each. There's. Right, right around there, you don't have guest parking, but. People come and go, one point three is low, but, but it's not the end of the world. Because your two bedrooms are not all gonna have two cars. Um. But I, you know, I think it's gotta be addressed, it's just whether you want it addressed before you approve, or.
Again, I'm comfortable with it, if it is addressed, and a good working officer is comfortable with it, then I'm, I'm fine with it. And, and I think the other comment that came up is just, uh, emergency vehicle access and the ability to. Uh, get in, get out.
Mm-hmm.
So that, when that question was raised, uh, last Ontario meeting, um, you mentioned that even if. There are zero cars on the lot, a standard fire truck would not be able to turn around there, either way.
Inside the parking lot, so they'd have to back out no matter what.
Exactly.
Probably rated likely to, um, annuals, even.
Yeah. Well, is there? Where's the fire hydrant, I guess is the question.
It's, uh, across the street by the, by your life.
It's supposed to be across the street and down.
It's, it's on the map here, and so I just didn't look at that.
Do you want your fire chief to?
Do you want your fire chief to look at that as a condition?
Uh he he did give us comments, but it was more related to the. Must you please relocate the F D C? That's the connection, right? It must be located on the fire apparatus access roadway of the structure. These, yeah, regarding, it's more installed thirty degree angle, knocks box must, it'd be required from the cannibal. So he he didn't say anything about the.
Access.
They'll have access on, on the north property, so get it from the parking lot to the rear as well. South, I think he's got a little more finished dish. Or they don't even use the parking lot.
And you pull up right up on that road, they got three hundred and eighty-eight feet. Of hose, they give me, Logan identified it right on the point.
So, how do we resolve?
Somebody should make a motion and it either passed or.
Well, I'm not, we're not ready for motion.
How do you resolve, so whether you're approving it with the condition or adjourning it to get a parking? Is that any questions?
No, no, I, the fire, the fire, yeah.
I don't know if there is, our department didn't have anything.
They didn't have anything, and essentially they'll get for other ones and new build, you know, built them all three units.
I didn't, I didn't see the chief's comments. Remember the New York State law on that, which, I mean, the code was a long two hundred and fifty feet or something like that. Uh and you needed to have.
Okay, um. Did you look at the background, the history of this in terms of how, in terms of zoning compliance align? We had a scramble this afternoon, uh the C C district, which this is in. Uh does not allow multi-family. So then it got into, okay, you've got apartments there, so obviously they were approved at some time.
Was there a rezoning at some?
Well, that that led me to think, it's also M U O overlay.
Right.
Maybe in the M U O overlay, they.
Allowed it.
They allowed the apartments, okay, so then, I'm thinking, well, usually the M U O overlay, it's a specific. Plan.
Right.
That is approved by the town board for the purposes of applying the overlay, so then. That had us looking for when the M U O was approved, and if there was a specific M U O for this site. And we couldn't find it, but I think Kristen came up with some letters from former zoning officers. Uh of the town, and I guess this question has come up before. And in all the situations, they concluded it was a pre-existing non-conformity. To be, that are being used as apartments, and even though they're not permitted in the community commercial district, the C C district. That it existed before. Before the district was developed.
Wait, so then, so this is not then rezoned mixed use overlay, it's. Apartments are not allowed, so it's pre-existing non-conforming use. You're not allowed to expand a pre-existing non-conformity without a variance from zoning law.
It does say in the zoning schedule that they can expand around.
Yeah. What is allowable on that? Also shouldn't be used. Yeah. Well, but if it's in the, I mean, so the mixed use overlay doesn't allow anything until.
But in the C C, it's a, this is an allowable use based on the pre-existing non-conformity. Having the expansion of a multi-family residence. It's in, it's in the schedule, it's in the schedule, yes.
Logan, where is this? On this schedule? On this? It's down to the tens, over right here. Okay, so it hasn't been directly re- rezoned, which is good, but like Chuck said, those are usually.
Specific.
Specific. So we've got a zoning schedule that says you can.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Schedule one. Whatever it is. Well, while that's being looked at, uh let's talk landscaping, uh make sure we're all caught full with what you're proposing. From my observation, you you have it to the north area, you have that existing evergreen.
Yeah.
Edge which.
Large juniper, I mean, you're driving down that access road to the plaza, you can hardly see the buildings at all. So I mean, it's working out as a very nice screen, so supplement to that, we're adding trees in the back just to screen it. Just to kind of match the character that's.
I think our code enforcement officer had a problem with shrubbery being so close to the new building.
I didn't move it back on the, on the newer plans.
My humble idea, I would rather move those bushes, those shrubs, or provide some sort of landscaping. Along the county route, Route ten for each. Uh rather than looking at the side of the buildings, county ten, because I think there's enough of a buffer with it. Between the grade differential to the driveway down to.
I think like tree trees or something like that, just lining the road or.
Deciduous trees that, you know, when they, you know, in summer and spring, they sure. Sleep bearing and. So I don't think it'd be a buffer necessarily, because I don't think we need a buffer even, how about on the?
We're just more of a landscape bed, like a long sidewalk and.
If you put along, if you put buffer along the driveway where the dumpster is, it's more to protect the view of the. Of the side of the uh, the side of the shopping center.
Yeah, right.
So that then, no. Anyway, I I would suggest that since the code enforcement officer doesn't, wasn't too enamored with the shrubs up. Next to the building, and since we have that evergreen pitch line, put some deciduous trees.
Sure.
Out front, uh you decide the driveway on.
Sure.
Because that's pretty barren there.
Mm-hmm, I agree, yeah.
You have sidewalk, that's good. So we don't have to deal with that issue. Looks like you're a little, you're a little concerned about where the sewer and the water connections are, but do you have a good idea, or you have an idea?
I mean, it's it's gonna be after, you know, field investigation during time of construction, but we know that they're there. Uh the re- the record maps didn't really give us much direction, so those are gonna have to be updated when we're. Installing the new lines to this building.
Uh stormwater, um I think. One of the buildings, the downspout stump and braid, and the two big buildings that goes underground some. Uh you, you know where it goes or?
I I don't, at at this time, I don't.
Well, what do you propose for the new building?
Just splash lots or?
Agree or?
Yep, that's what we're proposing.
So they're gonna dump across the sidewalk, run out to the parking lot. I think the the way the parking lot is shaped currently, it sort of goes where the dumpster pad is, and then runs over the hill and.
Yeah, it goes to the rear.
So, trees, trees, so it'll run under or through the new dumpster. Yeah, we think Lance's source control is, but they, I don't know what else.
Try to angle to the rear, everybody goes to the rear, but.
I mean, yeah, we could make it go to the grass instead of.
Side.
Yeah.
Shoot them to the side.
Yeah, I mean, that's also, right, that's also an option.
Or bury it in that parking, I think there has additional pavement right over there as well.
Right.
There's no code or split or anything.
He's under the threshold, it's really just how is he gonna treat it? Um we didn't add any additional pavement, so we weren't looking necessarily to. There, there isn't any known stormwater issues that I'm I'm aware of, you know, talking with the town for this area, so. I didn't, I didn't foresee a major issue other than trying to figure out how to best get it away from certainly the parking in the sidewalk area.
It's got a mailbox up in front of that office building. I assume that's for some of the units, I don't, I guess it might be the units on the north side is. Uh I guess that box is gonna be moved, yes. You brought up some points about the part one, the seeker. Yeah, I think we're seeing your, you have. So I guess they'll be covered. I think you responded, there's a wetland. About thirteen A.
I think it just said yes.
Yes, there is one nearby, but they're not gonna.
I think it's probably across, across the street.
I mean, there's anything outside, no. And others, and they have.
Okay, yeah, the C E O had quite a few comments, I think you have it in your conditions. Fire codes, laundry area seated, V N S notes.
I think those have been addressed on the most recent plans that were submitted.
Well, that's where the planning incentive in the building came up. Uh show the handicap parking. Uh you had in your, your planning schedule, three maple trees. And only one was shown.
I think I, it was an error on my part with the numbering. It should, it should just be one.
Okay, well, it'll be, it'll be more now.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be updated with. Uh based on the conversation we've had tonight.
I'm still, yeah, your your comment, whether it was the dumpster enclosure. Realign the pavement, number of parking spaces, you you suggested wheel stops. Uh so it doesn't ever hang sidewalks.
Yeah, I wasn't totally convinced I understood how the sidewalk, you know, the sidewalk bumps, so we're just thinking for safety.
I mean.
But I mean, I I also realized that those stops are gonna create a scenario where just. I think it's, it would make sense to place if we could.
Sure. You don't require.
We're gonna have a transition from the pavement to the sidewalk, it's just the sidewalks, with no stop, and cars are potentially overhanging your sidewalks, so.
Right, yeah.
If we could have a wheel stop place out there, give us a little.
We'll have a review letter to say, put them in, or you suggested.
I'm suggesting.
And you're willing to.
I mean, that's, that's a question for Eugene and my.
How how those look like, I've never seen those being installed, so maybe that's just.
It's a distance, so it'll be placed at a distance, so that the front wheels prevent the overhang of the vehicle. From crossing over your sidewalk, under the sidewalk, that prevents the cars from running over the sidewalk.
Okay, I hear you, and they're usually.
And then, so there'll be a little bit of distance, they'll be in your parking lot, so the distance from the wheel stop to the, to the sidewalk, you won't be to, you won't be to pave it. Or not pave it, clear it with, you know.
Snow roll.
Yeah, snow roll.
Yeah.
They're usually staked in, so they don't move.
I mean, it's a barrier, I mean, but there's.
So like, there's, there's.
Baller you're saying? I mean, they can be ballers, they could be stopwax, there's, there's options.
Your options are, just something through the vehicles from hitting the sidewalk.
Pre-fabricated, there's some.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There's variations on them, so you.
Yeah, six feet long, you're driving it in three bars.
Yep.
Uh we had a few that were mobile, and then we since ended up removing them. There's two current tenants that um are on wheelchair. And I guess they prefer not having that, you know, strike their way, because technically all of the areas on the first floor are A D A compliant. Meaning you can come out of your van, wheel in right, you know, it's all black.
The sidewalk is flush in that gray area then?
Yeah, they're all, they're all flush.
So every single building here, the first floor is washed with the actual pavement.
Yeah, so there's, so there is no transit.
No, it's 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 flat, so I mean, it'd probably be those concrete stops.
So to put the wheel stops everywhere where you're not having a, your handicap.
Exactly, I mean, that's.
So.
That they will have a, an access point based on the handicap accessible.
Right, so we clear, will be trucking as required, yeah.
Exactly, it'll be fine.
Alrighty. Park and rec fee, you you have it in the resolution, I just want to make sure the applicant's aware and the four degrees. That be included, so it'd be eight times fifteen hundred. Okay. You know, conditions. Do we have anything else?
Just the lighting is gonna be on, so retune it, there's not gonna be anything in the parking.
No, maybe exactly how it is now. Yeah, so I I I don't recall seeing any light poles or anything of that nature, so be more intimate as far as the lighting goes.
The lights on the buildings?
Yeah.
Okay, um anybody in the audience? Have any comments? Okay, I gave everybody a chance. Okay, let's move on, um is the board ready to uh move on this, uh do we feel we? Have enough information, discussed it enough?
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to kind of go over some?
Yeah, let's go.
There's been a lot of dialogue. So I was gonna go over the ones that I added, and then I think we can touch on some of the ones that, that might already be in there. So nine, I have the proposed handicap parking spaces are to be shown on the state plans. In compliance with the state requirements prior to signature being fixed. And the proposed handicap parking spaces, so it defines, they'll be in the class of each state. The other one I added was a notice to be added to the plan stating that the parking lot area is going to be repaved and striped. By identify the parking spaces. Um the other one I have, the plans are to be revised to reduce um, to reduce the parking stall size to nine by eighteen. And to add additional stalls, I put up to four additional spaces along the frontage slash driveling entrance. So they reduced the size of the stalls, I think they gained two, and then additional four spaces on the front which is six.
I need to throw in a little range there, because if we're gonna ask them to do a parking lot study. And that study come back and says they're good, then they won't need to do anything extra.
Should we just say?
We should just say.
To be be it and.
Should it stand approval?
Well, so maybe applicant shall be entitled to reduce parking spots, that way they don't have to come back for a minute.
Yeah, I mean, or answer, does that make sense?
Right.
I have five is all comments by code enforcement, but maybe here we specify specifically that parking study be provided. And. We need the code enforcement officer's requirements.
Yeah.
Whatever that is, whatever that is.
If need be.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, with with the full approval to reduce the size if they need to, to meet the requirements.
So, so parking study as required by code enforcement officer is to be provided to meet the code enforcement officer's requirements. And if need be, the parking lot stall sizes are to be reduced and additional parking spaces to meet whatever that is.
Whatever it means.
Are to be provided.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes, yeah.
I just didn't want to say you're gonna need to do this, and then the study says don't.
Yeah.
But it'd be no less than the forty-four space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, right.
It's like a good damn.
The other one I added was, this had to do with the landscaping, I believe Chuck you were saying, I just, I wasn't sure, are we relocating the proposed landscaping to the front? Or kind of.
We're eliminating the shrubs along the back of the new building. Okay, so.
Eliminate shrubs.
Of the new.
I think the comment was moved in further ways from the building to provide better access to the second story if, for fire access. So I have done that already, I spaced them like ten, five or ten feet away from the building, I, I mean.
So we're not removing, we're.
We're moving them farther away from the.
So you were saying, keep the shrubs at the location, and add additional trees along the front.
Yes, yes, I see. I, it matches with their.
I think the shrubs are redundant because it's got the.
I, I agree.
You've got the energy there that's both thicker than the shrubs.
I'm, I'm fine with removing them, because I don't think they're really doing any justice to the site, as you're saying, so I, I'm, 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 I'm. Fine with eliminating the shrubs.
And.
Place.
Stall five. Are the windows on back there? Are the windows on back?
I believe so.
And five. Isn't it number chuck, just provide additional landscaping?
Uh, yeah, you decide, I deciduous, deciduous trees, uh. Inside of north and south of the driveway entrance. Number. Three on each side, six. And the caliber would have to be two and a half.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a large deciduous, not the ornamental. So it'd be larger in stature, so it's, yeah, the two and a half inch caliper.
Okay, that, that, is that it? Those are the four that I have, plus I got some time to your comments, collaborate about comments.
Do you feel anything else has to be?
Yeah. One. The first thing I think should be added. Is that mixed use overlay district. Should be removed from the zoning identification, it says CC community, mixed use overlay district. Uh, which it is, I just, since it hasn't been designated, it's rezoned into mixed use. Confusing.
Okay, well.
And then.
We solve the problem we have today, yeah.
Yeah, well, I started talking to Lance, it's been, you know. And then the next one would be to revise the bulk table on the site plan. To show. Continuation and expansion of existing residential uses. In the proposed and existing. Boxes.
On the zoning data, data chart?
Yeah, the bulk area standard stable, it says proposed multifamily residential, existing multifamily residential. CC community commercial, not allowed use, but continuation and expansion isn't allowed use.
We want to define that.
Yeah, and I'd like, and I've got this section.
As it's stated in the schedule, basically.
Well, it's not just in the schedule, that's what I was looking up. Um, community commercial permitted principal use. Uh, under two twenty dash twenty-three B one, is any use permitted in a neighborhood commercial and C district? And in the neighborhood. Commercial district two twenty dash twenty-two B twelve, a permitted principal use is continuation and expansion. Of existing residential uses.
Okay.
And if you can be so kind as to reference those two sections, CC, the NC. Cause that way, when someone says, wait a minute, you're not allowed to build apartments in this community commercial, they could say, well, actually. Yeah, so just further clarification, yeah, we got there, so when somebody.
Save the next guy, we went through this afternoon.
Yeah, yeah.
Lance, did you wanna say anything about the drainage off the back?
Yeah. Um. I don't know that I want to, I think, maybe what we wanna say is, loop leaders are to discharge. Or to be. To discharge away from pavement air, the parking area and sidewalk area. And then leave it up to them to, to figure out how to make that work, so that it's not, as opposed to just shit falling across the park.
Right, yeah.
They're to be directed away from the parking. And notes to be added to the plans.
Were there downspouts on the back of that building? I didn't walk around, but I mean, I obviously saw them on the posts.
Yeah, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Front. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Thinking in boss, I mean, we've been there when it was downpouring, and it didn't seem like. Type.
You didn't ever been in the parking lot, so.
I would think that somebody did a good job making sure that they're not directed in the parking lot. I don't know for sure.
And I don't know where those downspouts for the bigger buildings go, they just go. Out of sight, so. Uh, there's a fortune pipe.
Could be a French drain around, or maybe a drywall, we just. I haven't seen anything from previous plans and.
Another of I.
Okay. Are we ready to move? Let's, uh, since the seeker's unlisted, let's. Do that separately. I can make that motion, I'll make a motion, we consider a resolution for unlisted action for the reference property. Acknowledging that the part one was submitted by the applicant and parts two and three were completed by the town. And. Assume of.
A second.
For discussion. In the findings, one ninety. Referring to. Um, parts being located at the playgrounds.
Uh, which ones did I hang up?
These are great, we can. That gets in the justification for the park directly.
But it is, some of it has to be tweaked to say, but some of these are standard statements, old, some of our statements. We have over the past come up with the findings as to how, why the plans were just. Inquiring the park and rec fee and making findings that. They're supporting this based on these.
So New York State town law. Says that a planning board must consider. Uh, whether or not, uh, a set aside and dedication of park land on a site plan should be required. Um, and to do so must consider whether the town's gonna need more parkland. As a result of this project. Uh, you know, when you've got a five hundred unit, uh, when, when Lake, Lakewood Meadows was built. You know, a real thorough analysis, I'm assuming was, uh, done and said, okay, we've got a part this park here, we've got that park here, we've covered. The New York State law also says, um, you know, essentially as a result of the increased demand, new housing will cause. On, uh. Your existing park and recreation facility, you can set, you can charge a fee in lieu of a set aside of parkland. Uh, and so Lance and I came up years ago with sort of boilerplate language. Um, and you don't set the fee, it's an annually established fee by the town board. Um, and so. Uh, when they go to build, they pick up a building permit, they pay that fee, and most towns have that. Um, and it goes, it's required to go into a special trust fund that can only be spent on. Essentially acquiring and capital improvements for parks and recreating, can't pay your lifeguards with that fund. Um, but you can repair roofs on, going on the park.
I think the thing threw you off, Mark, was that if you put on this subdivision.
Yeah, I have to change subdivision, carry it throughout, that's gonna reflect site. And then apartments as I.
Well, we're not putting anything on the site. Recreation in lieu, we're. We're requesting. Assessment, excuse me, so. Okay, understood. Uh, okay, back to the seeker. Got a motion of second, get a move, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, okay, let's move on to the site plan.
I'll move to approve the single stage site plan approval for twenty-four. Dash zero one three thirty-two thirty, Martin Row County Route ten, um, with, I believe we are up to fifteen. Fifteen conditions, and Lance, I'm sorry to pick on you, but finding number five, the Z L day, Z L day, Z L D. Um, prepared March twenty-six twenty-four, and sorry, I just. Stared right back at me, um, so I've moved to approve with fifteen conditions.
I'll select your terms.
Thank you.
Okay. For the special. Uh, yeah, the finding, uh, the Z L D was fresh off the press today, to revise. Uh. Everybody got a chance to read it, with trial permit, okay, so we got a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Logan, I'm gonna give you your elevation back, also gonna give you. Oh, you wanna keep that?
I wanna keep that, good, well, it's such a tiny. I mean, if you wind up building eight, three bedroom apartments.
Research that, uh. In terms of it's a, it's a. Nice to call me, it's just. Okay, so. Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Logan.
Oh, yeah, I didn't read Eric, Eric Cooper also did. Oh. It's like every two years, we had the, this came up. Alrighty, we're moving. Moving on to. The minutes, from March twelfth. Prepared by. Kareem. Yeah. Yeah.
Jumping.
Lance gave it to me.
Yeah, I know, it showed up.
Uh, okay, well. I'm cool by what I have.
You're just the messenger.
He's the messenger. So I did provide one, didn't realize it wasn't on the agenda, I did have a note in my file that said, they sent this in, I believe it was. Another table on there in March eight, twenty twenty-three, I think it's supposed to be March eight, twenty twenty-four. I had prepared one, I talked to Kristen, I talked to Chris, understand there wasn't an agenda, so the suggestion is, push it off to your next meeting. Uh, that way you get property placed on the agenda, and per our previous requirements. We have a letter, a predate expiration date, which in this case would be March twenty-fourth, which is already occurred, uh, that would be our suggestion. Our, cause I'm speaking for Kristen.
Looking start.
Okay. So they're asking for a second extension. Gosh, they were, he was, it was just here, wasn't it? Okay. That, that was combined to a D and to a.
He also got an amendment in there, so I don't even know technically if they really expired, because it just renewed it, so. I think at the same time they got their first extensions. I was just basing on what the notes had had. So the thought is, is just based on your cars currently rules of procedure, it's not on the agenda, they're free.
So they're still working on, the reason for the extension request is still working on the conditions of approval.
So to, to get my, I have received plans for review from them that they had submitted to the town vehicle a while ago. Now we're going through, addressing the final conditions of approval. I believe once they get our approvals on it, they're gonna submit it to the agencies for.
So they're getting close.
They're pretty close.
So. Second.
I also received a letter of credit for review, is, which was one of the conditions, so we had the road quantities and all that, so she would be, be part of. Section two and A bill. So those currently have been received and are under review.
What do you wanna do, folks?
My opinion would be just granted. Why wait?
Yes. That would mean.
Sure.
Nothing I would research.
For me, it would be helpful, helpful to know if we've established precedence on stuff in the past. I think that's the only.
Uh, well. It's not like the applicant brought the thing in. Hey, that was March eighth, right, they submitted a.
Yeah, I got an email from the town, can they well CC me, uh, this request, I put it in. My planning folder for tonight's resolutions, and. When I was going through it today to print out, I realized that, I'm like, oh, I should probably do that, so I did that. Unbeknownst, I didn't realize it wasn't really on the agenda, it's the only reason why I was before getting. I don't know if the applicant, you know, I think they were trying to get it in before their, their expiration date. So being that we, we've done it before, where as long as we have the letter prior to our expiration date, if you didn't ask, I'm just thinking next meeting. Go inside with what you've done before, I don't think. This is around Chris and Kristen, I don't think that would be an issue.
My thought is, unless there's a reason not to. You should always err on the side of granting extensions, because if you don't, even if they submit the letter a day after it expires. You should still grant it, because the alternative is they reapply. Take up staff's time, Lance's time, my time, and your time. And their, and the applicant's time and money. Um, and uncertainty to grant an approval that you're pretty much required by law to grant. Because you already did, unless circumstances, if circumstances have changed, strike them. My advice is implausible, but if circumstances are the same. That, you know, you can grant or not grant, but they just have to reapply, and, you know, you can change your mind.
I, I wouldn't wanna start pressing up any extensions if they came in after the extension expired, I mean, that. Then we have to give it some service thought, but in this case, it did come in before the extension expired. Uh, it actually came in before our last meeting.
I think it came in like, you know, it was, I think it was supposed to be on the agenda, it just.
So the only reason it wasn't on the agenda tonight was a fellow bottom of your file, so.
I wouldn't put it all on me.
It was a miscommunication. The Marvin staff, and that's okay, that stuff happens.
I would, I would request a motion. I seek a motion to extend from some.
Still moved.
Second. For the discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Alrighty, can we go to the minutes now? Kavina's patiently waiting, the minutes be approved.
So much.
Second. Okay. I have motion second, all in favor? Thank you, Kareem, nice job. Hey, we have no surety releases. Uh. Yeah. Okay, you may have heard that the German Brothers Sinazoni request was denied last night by the town board. So that is. In the water for now. It, the, the thing about the year, that that got.
The code allows for people to apply within one year.
Right.
Under changed circumstances, I just spelled it out in the revolution. It made it so that they didn't come to the planning board to do that, that they would come to the town board. Cause quite frankly, when people come to the planning board without. On those. Unexplained. Situations with the concept plans. It's a. Burden on you to figure out what you're doing with it. Whereas if they came back with an incentive application to the town board. The town board would. Know what decision they were required to make. And it pertains. I just tried to streamline things and make your lives open and take a weird little thing off your plates. Uh.
But you didn't streamline it.
Didn't streamline it for the amount of time it got sent to the town board. Um. And I said, told the town board, look, I put that in there. You don't have to. You can change it or amend it. It just made more sense in my mind. Um, on incentive zoning applications, the planning board winds up looking at it three times. I didn't think you needed a fourth time for decision that really only impacts.
And you got that resolution correction. Uh. The resolution said the planning board looked at it November twenty third, two thousand twenty four. And that would be. Yeah, that would be good. Would have been.
It's a Sunday.
Asia. Kind of Asian boo, you know. Look ahead. Okay, uh, so that uh takes care of that.
On that day.
The Gilbert Sports Complex. Has it been decided that it's gotta go back to the town board before it comes to us for final site plan? This was the M U O.
No, that's. Right.
Okay, but they did change the plan.
They changed the plans, but then.
Did change the plan?
Small.
Very small.
What changed?
They made the building smaller. A little small.
Well, why don't why don't you send them? Can you email me the plan? Um, I can actually probably answer just looking at the plan because I wrote the law and remember what I. I think I remember the parameters.
It's not a big deal. It's uh fourteen four each building down to. Twelve. Twelve.
I could check if I.
He wanted to get under the sprinkler.
I just have to check if I wrote. Provided that they build exactly what's in the plan. I don't think I did.
Okay. And the last thing I have is we are going to see. Next month sometime a request from. Janeco. Or a P U D uh project out on between Purdy Road and Town Line. Uh. It was discussed at the. Town Board last night. And it was. I tuned in so I could see the presentation and there was no presentation.
You know, I just read that. I saw that in your email, Chuck, and. Quite frankly, I the the P U D. Section of code is a little, the procedural aspect. Like the mixed use overlay and the incentive zoning, but this one's even a little more. Um, is a little bit convoluted, so I wrote a memo that spelled that out. I think I even wrote.
Yep.
Um, yes, and Anthony uh Venizia was at the meeting last night and actually wanted to make a presentation and I think. I think what happened, I'm speaking. As just as someone who was at the town board meeting, not on behalf of the town board. I think Anthony was gonna make a present presentation and then. A board member had questions that he thought should be raised in executive session. We're about to go into executive session and that board member said, wait, why don't we just do that at the end of the meeting? So we don't have to ask twenty people to file out of the room and stand in the hallway. Which was civilized and I think made sense and then. At that point, and it was mixed with other executive sessions and that's one executive session, so it's worth matter of public record. But so it took a little while. Um. I'm looking, I wanna just make sure. The applicant shall first make a presentation. Some say it doesn't say that it has to be an oral or verbal presentation. She presented a plan. Um. And and the decision made last night. Was to consider it and send it to the planning board for review and referral. The dates in that memo, I'm assuming you're looking.
Yeah, that the.
I made those up based on submission deadlines. Um, and I sent it out to Lance and Sarah. And then looked at it again, Lance and Sarah and say, it just makes sense, right? And then I realized I missed a month. So I condensed it on my own. If it doesn't work on that deadline, that's my. Interpretation of what's out there. You, if you need two meetings to review it, take two meetings.
And we haven't seen anything yet.
Uh.
Now, I I I we can certainly put it on the agenda for the night. The April, but I would hope that someone representing the applicant will be here to. Make a presentation.
Kristen, can you convey that?
Uh. And.
To Anthony.
Then we we get whatever. Materials that were submitted distributed to the board or somehow put a cloud permit that we can access them.
They are.
Is it under Purdy Road or is it?
It's under Janeco. I think I'm checking right now. Yup. Um, if you type it, if you search Janeco. It's it says P D Purdy Road Extension P U D.
Okay.
Um. And all that's on there is the concept plan. Uh, a letter of intent in a seeker. Short, long form.
Yeah, full A F.
Which. Quite frankly, well, E A F isn't even. Like remotely ready. Yeah, it's something provide. Well, we had talked to the Venizia in regards to some information. So I had suggested they prepare an E A F as best as they could with the information they had available. To support it, to provide some environmental assistance. Obviously, if the board goes through the P U D application process, they're gonna complete it. That's weird. Um. Well, so.
So I I would think we'd approach this as a sketch plan, essentially like we handle these sketch plans.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess it's a thing a little different where they're 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 asked to provide advisory report to the town board as to what we think about it. So I guess we could generate that as a result of that meeting or. The next meeting is pretty busy.
Something to know for those who don't or maybe you do know.
Yep.
This road has already been read upon. Not necessarily who builds it. I think that's the. No, that's, I mean, that is that is a developer based road. That is not something the town. No, the alignment of the road and its location has been returned. The water main along this area also has been sized and then returned. So that's the one kind. The one consistent feature associated with this project that I believe is ongoing. Yes. Everything else is there. So. Yes, um, so. What you're looking for, what what will happen on the ninth. Is a sketch plan, concept sketch plan. Um, where you make suggestion suggestive modification and then also. A recommendation regarding the sketch plan within thirty days after receipt of consent proposal. Don't say whether it's the date you receive it or the town receives it. This is the sketch plan. I don't think there's a ton of. Um. Technical review that needs.
No, no.
Because there there's no technical stuff.
Or use the sketch bones.
Oh, but your recommendation. Uh, is required before they can actually submit a full. P U D zoning application. And that's the important thing to remember is we're not rushing this. We're moving it forward. They haven't even been allowed. By code to even submit a P U D zoning application. This is a concept sketch that required a vote to consider from the town board. And then requires you to have a concept plan review. Um.
Well, the first step was last night. The the town. Took the request, not the application request.
That will consider and will consider. And if they felt and they did, it was worth.
Considering that it goes out to the planning board. And I does it good to consult, uh, does M R B start to look at it yet or not yet?
At some point.
Some point. Well, I know it's like.
Those. Um, I'll tell you why. I mean, and I I was involved with some of the discussions. Why I thought it was really, and one of the reasons. The town would love that road there, but the town has other roads to spend money.
Hmm.
Uh. And. Mister Janeco has always intended to build townhouses there. And I I forget there's a plan on the, oh, that's the other thing. On the project webpage under Kennedy with Farmington Water Improvement. There's a lot of information about the history of this parcel. You may wanna take a look at. Um, but when the issue came up. We looked at it. It's in the mixed use overlay zoning district. Um, it's right above the form based code business business improvement district areas. This is where the town has identified in all of its planning. Where you want stuff like like this.
Higher density.
Uh, higher density and some mixed uses. Um. You know, I think. From my position, I mean, uh, Venizia did a bang of job on. Uh, putting together a concept plan of these are some good uses to mix mixing. Um, but but the only reason it's being moved forward like it is, this is where the towns identify. Um.
Yeah.
What it wants.
I I think we got a whiff of this with the local route subdivision.
Yeah.
So I think we all that subdivision, we were trying to make sure that.
Yeah.
It would line up. Cause we knew a concept of what the road was gonna look like, where the water lines were on. So we wanted to make sure it was a. An intersection that would function, uh, and wasn't coming in at an angle. Cause originally I think.
Yeah.
I think Rocco had it coming in. Like a sixty degree.
Yeah.
Angle. So we hooked it down and now it's ninety degrees and the site distance is.
Well.
Acceptable.
And it it moved. Because the out on the Purdy Road, the road moved because of, I forget, oh, they needed the water. Alignment of. Mister Janeco's original plan was to run. The road to here.
Hmm.
Purdy Road here. Um, and this is probably five, six years ago. Um, and Greg said, uh, we need the water line over here. I think it's a little out there.
It's there.
And he said, okay, I'll buy that. So he bought his house. And I think it's, I think there's a house there.
Yeah, there's a house.
When it's. I think he already had that. Oh, yeah, his plan was to run the road. He has this this parcel has access on Purdy Road. The plan was to run the road like that.
Hmm.
And Greg said, we need the water line over here. He bought that. And so the reason it's not. Um, you know, mixed use overlay identifies as a world node. Mixed use overlay is is a possibility here. It's not as flexible and. Doesn't provide him the density that he would like to get to and. This lines up with the P U D more. It's not the hundred acres that. The code wants, but the code allows to reduce it sixty six acres that. You know, you would have to wind up doing ten mixed use overlay rezonings. Um, and not get nearly what you what the town's getting out of the. That's some background to think about.
And the only P U D we have currently is Center Point.
Yeah, and. Uh, you know. P U Ds are a very great tool. They very rarely come across. They, nobody does P U Ds anymore. The last one that the town did was Center Point, which was. Forty years of the thirty thirty at least, but maybe forty years ago for all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I, you know, recommend the board, once you get that package. Whatever was submitted, uh. Or go to the cloud permanent, look at it. Uh, they can review the P U D code. And I guess come in here on the ninth, ready to. Hear the presentation and hear what they're posing and then make comments.
So if. If Kristen, you're gonna email, can you arrange to email them that?
Yeah.
Package and stuff from the. Uh, project page. Um, if you have questions before then or a list of questions you wanna address. This is the concept sketch where you're not really bound by the strict. You gotta follow the. Process. Call Lance, you can call me and email us. What, why is it this? Why is that? Whatever we allow to do here under the code is a legal question, but it's a technical question, so we have to answer. Um. But you know, this is. The the productive stage of. Easy processes when, you know, you can help the developer and the town come up with something even better. Or improvements to.
And like Chris said, I I don't wanna feel rushed because I I know it. There is a urgency here because of the water line and all that. So I. On one hand, but on the other hand, I think it's such a big project.
No, so. There was a rush. On the Janeco's standpoint. For the town to give an indication that this was something that it would consider. All they had. Up till then was the town supervisor and the town attorney saying, yeah, 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 well, you know. Don't worry about it. And so they wanted to see some action. Um, you know, I would strongly request. As part of this process and suggest. That you hear it on the night. If you if you need more time. We, you can have, I mean, that's not the end of the world. Putting it on your, you know, may not may ninth agenda is not okay. Hear it if you need more time, pay. Um, but I.
Okay, no.
I want.
We'll be the.
See sort of the difference that you can't just keep putting it off and not. Making progress, but if we're making progress or you need more time, it's absolutely entitled to. There's no rush in that standpoint.
Isn't getting that water main in the ground.
Or I I believe the water mains already.
That's it. Okay, so that's.
Or it's it's going right.
So that's pretty well defined the spiner.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, there's not a lot of options there, but. Um. Then it's a matter of. I guess restoring, I I know Jim Fletcher's talking about, you know, do I? I do I put, how do I backfill it? Do I backfill or bring it up to grade to? To the standard of eventually it's gonna be a road or bringing it up to a standard. It's just. To an easement to.
Yeah.
It just scatters. And I think that's why there's some sort of urgency to. Get this thing tied tied in so Mr. Janeco can. Uh, get what he wants and the town gets a a road that'll provide access from Purdy up to. Town Line Road, which allow access to traffic signal.
Yeah, and I think there's a heavy medium there. The town can't. Grade this road for, and we don't have the money to do that, but we can certainly. Take the steps. To make it, you know, to not make it harder on them. Uh. Because the town does have an interest.
Okay. I think we discussed it enough. Okay, anything else, uh? Would be good of the board, the ninth. Excuse me, the.
Provided that the world doesn't have a.
Well, you need, yeah, that's right.
Or we all go blind looking at the.
This is like Y two K. People are. God, late. It's gonna be. Armageddon. People are coming to Canada.
I heard on the eleven eighty this morning, it said, you know, the state is advising you that the fur waves will be jam packed. Pat, but carry blankets, fill your gas tank up and have water in your car.
Gas station.
Um, is that because of the apocalypse is gonna happen?
No, traffic. I think traffic.
So if you're really gonna go to it, why don't you go to someplace that has a.
Maybe the sun won't come back out again.
Or, you know. But it's Texas. You don't even have cops down there.
That's right.
They go down.
I don't think it's in Texas, is it?
No, it's a.
Oh, really?
It's a sweet. All right, the ninth, uh. Talked about the uh Janeco.
Yeah, I added that one.
Okay.
Presentation.
Um, we've got the Popeye sign.
Yup.
Ew.
I don't think it's been any longer. Since. Yeah. Yeah.
They're asking for a second ninety days.
No, so I'll be clear. That's the second day ninety day extension, the second ninety day extension expires.
Oh.
For twenty two twenty four. So the expiration date. Occurs prior to your April twenty third meeting. So if they haven't even submitted a request, honey, kind yet to the town. I'm just putting it on there as a placeholder.
Who was it? I'm sorry.
Sunset Ridge.
Okay.
You've had a lot of competition.
It expires the twenty second. Okay.
The day before the.
Or.
The Sunday.
Monday.
Yeah, I can, I, I've sent it to you, but I've been a pretty long.
No, that's. Speaking of part, man.
Nope.
Don't leave a speaking apart, man.
And then we're gonna uh have an appeal for an amendment to that condition on. The Thomas River subdivision regarding that seven lot subdivision. Uh.
Everyone understands that? Question.
I don't know if everybody seen the. Where are you guys?
Oh. It's, it's a resource that can explain that, so Lance explaining it to me.
Well, I don't.
For me, that's. Resource to me. Can you do it fifty words of us?
I could try. Um. So. Rocco had a subdivision before us, Thomas Road subdivision, Nikowski, whatever it was.
Warner.
Some brickyard. There's two sections, there's the residential portion and the commercial portion. He divided them into two and his big. Pocket of land there, where we've seen many, 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 that's a. Long story short. In doing so, we put a condition on those seven residential lots that said. Project of larger common plan development, stormwater mitigation will have to be met for all these lots. Because you don't want them to piecemeal it and not have to put any stormwater mitigation up. The uh, Marcus engineer reached out to D C, we had a conversation with them doing so and said, provide us some language that supports the town possibly. And then because they, they have a buyer for six of the seven lots and they wanna do residential lots on those six lots and all those six lots are under. The one acre threshold, in fact, are less than five acres, which is the threshold for stormwater mitigation at residential. So. D C came back with some language that says, yeah, I, we could support it, the town doesn't have any objection to it. So. We met with them, the suggestion was to amend the condition to put that. That type of requirement, stormwater mitigation. On lot seven for your consideration. Um, and so lot seven with any improvements they make, whatever it may be. Would be triggering, which is the, the biggest lot of all of them, I think it was like twenty three acres remaining vacant. That they would be required to do stormwater mitigation. For their project and then. Any additional outside area that gets conveyed to that area.
What if lot seven turns into fourteen different?
So that's the, that was what we're trying to prevent, but by adding, by changing the lot to put it out for lot seven. They come in to put a curb cut of ten feet only stormwater for the whole development, but.
Each of. So the all six lots are under five acres?
Yeah, total.
Total. Oh, so.
Because we made the, but when Rocco came in, I'm not trying to. The idea that we proposed to Rocco was come up with a concept plan for stormwater for the whole area. So that it's laid out, we did something very similar on a previous application. Where they had four residential lots, I think it was Foster Road. Where they had to do a drainage plant.
Hmm.
As part of whatever the first criteria, so similarly, we did something here. It just so happens they have. A builder who wants to build on the six lots, not on the seventh lot. The seventh lot being the biggest. Is where it would all be triggered upon realistically anyway.
He can't get his financing.
Right.
With their note on the plan. With the obligation on the lot seven.
They probably could if. There was a plan that showed how they would accommodate stormwater, which is gonna fall on somebody else's lot, not owned by them.
We, each one of these lots have their own. Stormwater.
Likely not, but.
What if they never build on seven?
Yeah.
Then the six slots in theory would meet all the D C requirements anyway, because they're all under that.
I think, yeah, they have.
The five D C requirements doesn't mean.
That meets the.
How, and is it good, is it, is a good plan, I mean. They're gonna have stormwater issues.
If lot seven never got built, it would be fun. If lot seven gets built with no stormwater mitigation now, if one lot on lot seven got built, one little residential home, then that would trigger the need. Which is why we're saying.
Lot seven never gets built in.
Right, what we're trying to prevent is lot seven being carved up into four more residential lots under that threshold, then that, there's stormwater. And then four years later, four more residential lots get carved up in there, under the stormwater mitigation. So. The criteria is. You do anything on lot seven, you have to do storm. Whatever it is.
Yeah, I think when we approved the six lots, we, we knew that they would be. Possibly sold as individual lots with homes in the future, or in this case, it's all one owner. Six, so. As long as they, they. Stand alone beneath the standards, uh, has he submitted the revised plan that? He was gonna have to move that property line, he's gonna put this up, you haven't seen that yet. Was he asking for a? Amendment to the plan, subdivision two, how's that gonna be?
No, I think he, I thought at P R C, they suggested that they were gonna come in with an amended plan for the commission and then submit. For the site plan, a lot more investment.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Yeah, I, I knew, I knew he was moving the line.
It's right there.
Okay. Uh, anything else?
So on the ninth.
Yes.
Mark was not here, that's fair.
Not here on the ninth?
And I'm traveling back from Saratoga, so.
The ninth of what?
April. Maybe I'll zoom in. Not gonna commit to.
Are you in San, or you come back there?
Come back there.
Yeah.
Probably won't be able to zoom, others I'd be there.
You might not be gonna make it in Scott with all the traffic from.
Yeah.
So.
It'll be today.
I have the gas.
It'll be the day.
Worst places.
Chuck, what's the sports complex's name?
Uh, Gilbert. So on the category twenty two.
If Tim's around.
Tim.
We'd be over there.
Yep.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
We do, we need a little.